All right, the time is now 6:00 PM. Our regular city council meeting for June 17, 2025 is now in session. And first on the agenda is Mayor Pearl Tempe Hayward will lead us with the opening prayer and the pledges of allegiance to the flags of the United States and the state of Texas. Please rise.
Power your heads. Almighty God, we thank you for allowing us to arrive safely at our meeting today. We are grateful for your protection and the opportunity to gather in this space of collaboration and service. I come before you on behalf of the council members called to serve your people with the heart of servant leaders, following the example of your son, Jesus Christ. Grant us humility to place the needs of our community above our own, listening with open hearts. Fill us with compassion to act with kindness, ensuring our decisions uplift and unite all. Give us the wisdom and clarity needed to make decisions. Help us to discern the paths that lead to genuine progress and fulfillment for our community. Place us in the courage to embrace change when necessary while remaining steadfast in the commitment to the common good. We also ask for your protection over our first responders and military members during this time. Keep them safe as they serve and protect our community. Grant them strength and courage in the face of challenges. Guide us in our willingness to admit mistakes, understanding that we are not infallible. Grant us the strength to acknowledge our errors and learn from them, fostering an environment of growth and transparency. May our humility in recognizing our shortcomings inspire others and strengthen our resolve to make better choices in the future. Give us strength to lead selflessly, work tirelessly for the welfare of all. May our service reflect your love and please allow us to arrive safely to our homes and back again. In Jesus' holy name, I pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mayor Pearl Tempe Hayward. All right, we have a presentation today. We have the Kid Cancer Prep Rally and the 5K Run 2025, donations to the Mace Cancer Center and UT Health San Antonio MD Anderson Cancer Center. Ms. Pedlock, yours.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here tonight to present this check on behalf of the City of Shirts and our incredible community. The Kid Cancer Prep Rally and 5K Run is held in memory every year of former councilman Tony Willencheck, whose legacy still continues to inspire us year after year. Back in March, our community came together with energy, heart, and purpose, and thanks to your support, we raised $10,899.85 for UT Health San Antonio MD Anderson Cancer Center. With this donation, we are proud to share that we have now contributed a total of $215,362.74 towards cancer research through this event over the years. A huge thank you to everyone who participated, including the Clemens Pep Band and cheerleaders who brought the spirit and of course to our generous sponsors, HEB, Shirts-Cibolo Emergency Clinic, RE/MAX, GVEC, Renewal by Anderson, Shirts Bank and Trust, State Farm Agent Nathan Obergron, and Samco Capital for making this event possible. Together, we were able to make a difference in the fight against cancer. And I have someone from the UT Health that I'd like to come up.
Council members, mayor, thank you for continuing to support cancer research here. As you know, it's where UT Health San Antonio, but we serve not only Bear County, but the vast majority of South Texas. So your impact and your support for research goes far beyond our community here. Thank you.
Do you come out? Thank you.
I just want to thank the community also for coming out for this great cause. Cancer affects us in so many ways, not only those that are, that have this dreadful disease, but also the family, the members, the friends that see the loved ones suffer through this insidious disease. And thank you for all the research that's being done. It has had an impact. Back in the, in the 60s and 70s, if you heard the word cancer, it was like a dreadful word. Now we fight through it because we are focusing on the, on the fight and not the fear. And thank you so much. All right, next on the agenda, we have announcements of upcoming events.
Thank you, mayor. We have a number of things going on. The Parks Department this Saturday, June 21st, is doing movies and music in the park. It's one of our floating flicks, so that's at Pickrell Park Pool. Doors open for that at 7:00 PM. It's 701 Oak Street. Just a reminder that for that one, space is limited, so best to get there early. The next day, Sunday, June 22nd, we have the Owl Prowl, 8:30 PM to 9:30 PM. That's at Crescent Bend Nature Park, 12805 West Schaefer Road. Monday morning, June 30th, this project flag line, be there at 7:30. That usually runs an hour or two, and folks can meet up in front of the community center to put out the flags along Shirts Parkway for the Fourth of July. And then just as a reminder for folks, city offices are closed Thursday and Friday, June 19th and 20th, and the next council meeting will be July 1st here in council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. James. All right, announcements and recognitions by our city manager, Mr. Williams.
No announcements today, mayor? Thank you. Thank you.
Announcements and recognitions by the mayor? I have none, so we'll move on. Next on the agenda is a hearing of residents. This time is set aside for any person who wishes to address the city council. Each person is limited to three minutes, and we ask before addressing the council for the record, please state your name and address. Now, we also have a public hearing scheduled today, so you do have options. You may speak during the hearing of residents, you may hold off until the public hearing, or you can speak at both. The choice is yours. With that, Mayor Pearl Tempe, please carve first speaker.
First speaker, Mr. Daniel Jamison.
Daniel Jamison, representing the VFW Post 8315, address FM 1000 here in Shirts. We're located right across Riverwood Tracks. You came, missed us, looked for that M60A1 tank sitting out front and a howitzer. We're sitting there. What we have coming up is our breakfast this weekend, Saturday, from 8:00 to 11:00. 10 bucks, all you can eat. Come help out the fellow veterans in our community. And we've got several here on staff as council members. Please, guys, and then also, I want to thank the city council for allowing the VFW to put on the Memorial Day service that we did. Thank you, mayor, for leading us in our pledge of allegiance and helping us with our event and getting everything going. And with that, I salute y'all for the work y'all have done for our city. And if we can help any other way, by all means, contact the veterans of foreign wars. We're here to serve you as we have served our nation for our cause. Thank you.
I have Flo Simmons.
Ladies and gentlemen, the council, staff, I want to talk trash. I came home and found these containers, which you have to admit are very formidable. My trash output a week is like maybe one plastic bag, which I do have to put in that container and drag it down an incline to get it picked up. And I think that we're a little unrealistic here, that if you do put it in, you've still got to put it in this container. And I hate to get really personal, but I'm 90 years old. I've got some heart problems. I've got high blood pressure, and my arm doesn't work very well, and yet you expect me to go out there and do this, rain or shine. And I did call the city, no, I called the trash company, and they said they couldn't do anything about modification, that I had to go through the city. I haven't got a chance to get back through the city yet, I'll admit that, but I am really a little disappointed that more work wasn't done to involve the city and the people. I'm not alone. I've talked to a lot of people who are having difficulty with this. I would go so far as saying that maybe for the staff, you might consider some training in community organizations, because when you make changes like this, you know as well as I do that you've got to get the community buy-in instead of creating a bunch of unhappy people. So this is my concern. I'm bringing it for you. I hope that there's some modifications that can be made to this contract. I'm told there isn't, but I also can't get my car out of the garage because of the tanks, you know? And it's, I just find it rather unreasonable. So are there any questions? Well, I would appreciate your attention to the matter, and just from everything I've heard and said, the main thing is, you know, nobody asks me. And so sometimes you do the surveys, sometimes two or three people answer. I know that's a problem, but this, these cans are pretty unreasonable. Okay, thank you for your time.
Ma'am, if you want to speak to Sarah Gonzalez right over here, she can get your name and number, and we can get you set up on the assistance program. It's completely free to you. They'll pick it up at your back door.
I tell people I can't see, can't hear, or smell good. They're supposed to laugh.
She's over there, ma'am.
Right there, ma'am. I'm sorry. She's right there. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, we have Maggie Titterington.
Good evening, mayor, city manager Williams and council. We, as a lot of you all know, today we are celebrating our 20 years of the Chamber of Commerce. Again, thank you to the City of Shirts for being one of our founding members. Obviously, we could not be where we are today without your support and the vision that Hal Baldwin shared with the small businesses in Shirts, and now we've expanded beyond Shirts, but we are just so glad to be your partners. I just wanted to give you a heads up on a couple of things we have going on. Next Friday on the 27th of June is our first summer smoothie celebration at Tropical Smoothie. Our members can come out from 7:30 to 9:00 and get a free smoothie and some breakfast treats and kind of talk to each other and network. So if y'all are available, please come out. Also, our young professionals, Hyper, are doing a pet supply drive, and it's to benefit all three animal shelters for Shirts, Cibolo, and Selma. So they are looking for pet food, pet supplies, cleaning items. They're going to collect these. They started June 1st, and they're going to go all the way through the end of the month, June 30th. And drop-off locations include Shirts City Hall, Fluff Butts Grooming, The Hair Factory, Farmers Insurance Natasha Reynoso Agency, and Slim Chickens on Roy Richards and Slim Chickens on 1604, the new location that just opened up. So if you want to help them assist the animal shelters, summertime is really hard to get these items in, please let us know and use one of those locations or go to the chamber.info and there's more information. Thank you.
Brent Bolter.
Brent Bolter, 2633 Cloverbrook Lane, Belmont Park subdivision. Did not know Flo was going to speak tonight about trash, but I'm coming up here to speak about trash as well. I don't know if you guys have been paying attention, so I was going to bring it to your attention, but go to the Shirts Facebook page and in any entry of "Let's Talk Trash", read the comments. I would suggest to you that more than a few people are upset about this coming change that we have no control over. I'm glad that Flo's going to get some help with her issue, but if you haven't been reading, look at those comments and see what your citizens think about the decision that was made. Coincident to that, when Republic was coming down my street to pick up trash last Thursday, I went out, shook their hands, thanked them for everything that they've done, and they let me know that I was not the only citizen that's done that. They said that many people on the route have come and expressed those same feelings and that were sad to see them go because they've been such great people, taking care of something that's not a really great thing to be taken care of. But they expressed to me that I was not the lone person to do that. So I also wanted to let you guys know kind of what the community feel is, at least in our community in Belmont Park, because I wasn't the only one that spoke to those individuals. On a whole other note, I just want to say to the city and whatever department was responsible and thanked them for restriping Belmont Parkway. Looks great, they did a super job, and at least I appreciate the fact that that's been restripped. That way, everybody knows where they're supposed to be and where they're not supposed to be, which is a good thing. So I just wanted to say thanks for that to whoever's responsible for taking care of that. And with that, I thank you for your time and your attention, and I will go bark my butt again. Thank you.
That is all, mayor.
All right, we'll move on to consent agenda items. They are considered self-explanatory information packets where provided the council and available for public viewing. These items require no separate discussion unless requested by council. Item number one, minutes. Item number two, appointments, reappointments, resignations of the City of Shirts boards, commissions, and committees. Item number three, resolution number 25R067. Item number four, resolution number 25R068. Item number five, resolution number 25R069. Item number six, resolution number 25R071. Item number seven, resolution number 25R073. Item number eight, resolution number 25R074. Item number nine, resolution number 25R075. Item number 10, resolution number 25R076. And item number 11, resolution number 25R078. Council, do any of these need to be removed for separate action? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 11?
I'll move.
Second.
We have motion made by council member Watson and second by Mayor Pearl Tempe Hayward. Council, any other comments? Please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please? Mayor Pearl Tempe Hayward would like to say a few words.
Yes, mayor. I didn't call for it to be called off for a discussion item. I just wanted to point out that we have two of our appointments for the library board and one for the parks board. We have Bradley Thuringer and Sidney Shippey here in the audience, and I just wanted to recognize them and say welcome to Shirts Boards. We appreciate you.
Yeah, I'd like to pass out my appreciation for being part of our boards and committees. Look forward to your discussion and the items that come before you. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on. Item number 12, resolution number 25R079, authorizing application to TechDOT for the transportation alternative funding and an advanced funding agreement with TechDOT if the project is selected for the Great Northern Trails design and construction. Ms. Trump, floor is yours.
Good evening, mayor. Thank you, council, Mr. Williams. Don't have a lot to present today. Wanted to just take some time to remind council about the Great Northern Trail project that we've been working on for several years. It's approximately an eight-mile trail, 10-foot wide, from the southern area of Shirts, near the Selma-Shirts city limits, all the way to northern Shirts, the Cypress Point neighborhood. About two years ago, we acquired a piece of property, the Dry Comal Creek Nature Park off on FM 482 and Bunker Street, and so we are working with the Great Springs Project in conjunction to put in this application to the TechDOT call for transportation alternatives funding. It funds projects just like this, trails, bike lanes, pedestrian access. It will be the northern section there in red identified in the map. It will be from FM 1103 all the way to Cypress Point, then down Schwab Road over to the Dry Comal Creek Nature Park and be a big chunk of this trail that we've been trying to get done for several years. The good part about this TechDOT call is it does include construction as well as design and professional services. A lot of the calls just do construction. This does both, so it's a great return on our investment. Similar to the other program calls, it's a 20% local match, 80% federal dollar match. This is a big project, estimated at about 7.7 million. We are going under I-35 with the trail. There's a current drainage culvert there at Schwab. It's wide enough for a trail. We would have to just do some work to the embankment, add lighting. We can get under there. We also have to cross the railroad on the way, 242. We might go under it on adjacent property. We might cross that grade. Still a lot of work to be done in design, but essentially this application is going to be submitted, and if we get it, we'd be coming back with an advanced funding agreement. To fund it, we are looking at multiple options. We projected some Parkland dedication revenues over the next couple of years. We can approach the EDC like we've done for other quality-of-life projects. We also have some other projects slated in the CIP that we could push back if we are awarded funding through this program call. We wanted to get the application in. We do have letters of support for this project currently from the Great Springs Project, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the City of Shirts, Comal County Commissioners' Court, Comal Trails Alliance, the AMPO, and TechDOT has a letter of no objection to this project. I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Trump. All right, council, floor is open for discussion. Council member Westbrook.
Good evening. So I have several questions, but we'll go one at a time. What criteria will be used to decide whether the Pickrell Park Pool or Crescent Bend Phase II is delayed to support the match? Will this decision return to council for final approval?
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, what criteria?
Yeah, will be used to decide whether the Pickrell Park Pool or Crescent Bend Phase II is delayed to support the match.
So essentially, we work through several channels. We work through our parks board to help try to prioritize our capital improvement projects. Then we take it through the city staff process where we look at prioritizing the projects comprehensively, and then, yes, we bring the capital improvement program to the council to vote on each fiscal year. And so you'll see if we make a shift and we can discuss it at that time. So yeah, as we've worked through this and if we know we get the funding, we can make our adjustments and come back, and hopefully we'll have that information. Actually, we won't have it, we'll have it probably right around budget time, budget adoption. I think we will find out whether we get this in October. So we might have to come back and let you know at a separate time what we've adjusted and why.
ADA compliance? Will there be any ADA compliance?
Absolutely. This will all be designed with ADA in mind.
All right. And has New, have New Braunfels and Selma been consulted about trail connectivity?
Absolutely, yes. We've gotten a letter of support from New Braunfels on our Dry Comal Creek project. We didn't get one for this, but they are also working from their direction to meet our trail network here at this location on 482. And then we have consulted with Selma, their Trails Master Plan, they came, their consultant came and discussed us, and we've interlocked all of our trail plans for the future.
Thank you.
Council member Gertardo.
Yeah, I have a question. This thing's going to cost 7.7 million, correct?
Correct.
And we're supposed to cough up 20%?
Correct.
Which is 1.5 million.
Correct.
Now, you said there's several areas that this money's going to come from to fund it. What's the main area that you're looking at?
So we have options, and again, we have not worked out and finalized the funding source. We have looked at the projections in the Parkland Dedication Fund, so we've looked out for the next couple of years with known development and what the revenues could be in that fund, so we have availability to pull from there. And we have up to 2 million, we think, that's coming in that fund over the next couple of years. We also could go present to the Economic Development Corporation Board like we've done on our previous quality-of-life projects and ask for them to fund this project. We just haven't had the ability to do so yet due to the timing on these applications. You know, sometimes we can't get everything done in time to submit the application. And then, as I said, we have a capital improvement program where we're working to plan out and project the next 10 years. Council approves it every fiscal year, but Finance Department works with us to project for future bond issuances and things like that where we might be able to find the funding. So I don't have a straight answer yet. It could come from multiple sources.
Yeah, too. But this Parkland Dedication Fund, that's one of the options, correct?
Correct.
No further questions.
Mayor Pearl Tempe Hayward.
Have you considered reaching out to our congressman for a project, community project funding, application to possibly see it, being that it's almost kind of a regional project because we're connecting with other communities?
I have not looked at that yet. Some of these federal-funded programs, though you can't match federal funds together, I'd have looked into it, but that's good.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, what criteria?
Yeah, will be used to decide whether the Pickle Park Pool or Crescent Bend Phase II is delayed to support the match.
So essentially, we work through several channels. We work through our Parks Board to help try to prioritize our capital improvement projects. Then we take it through the city staff process where we look at prioritizing the projects comprehensively, and then, yes, we bring the capital improvement program to the council to vote on each fiscal year. And so, you'll see if we make a shift and we can discuss it at that time. So, yeah, as we've worked through this, and if we know we get the funding, we can make our adjustments and come back. And hopefully, we'll have that information. Actually, we won't have it. We'll have it probably right around budget time, budget adoption. I think we will find out whether we get this in October. So we might have to come back and let you know at a separate time what we've adjusted and why.
ADA compliance? Will there be any ADA compliance?
Absolutely. This will all be designed with ADA in mind.
All right. And have New Braunfels and Selma been consulted about trail connectivity?
Absolutely, yes. We've gotten a letter of support from New Braunfels on our Dry Comal Creek project. We didn't get one for this, but they are also working from their direction to meet our trail network here at this location on 482. And then, we have consulted with Selma, their Trails Master Plan. They came, their consultant came and discussed us, and we've interlocked all of our trail plans for the future.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gertado.
Yeah, I have a question. This thing's going to cost 7.7 million, correct?
Correct.
And we're supposed to cough up 20%?
Correct.
Which is 1.5 million.
Correct.
Now, you said there's several areas that this money's going to come from to fund it? What's the main area that you're looking at?
So, we have options, and again, we have not worked out and finalized the funding source. We have looked at the projections in the Parkland Dedication Fund, so we've looked out for the next couple of years with known development and what the revenues could be in that fund, so we have availability to pull from there. And we have up to 2 million, we think, that's coming in that fund over the next couple of years. We also could go present to the Economic Development Corporation Board like we've done on our previous quality-of-life projects and ask for them to fund this project. We just haven't had the ability to do so yet. Due to the timing on these applications, you know, sometimes we can't get everything done in time to submit the application. And then, as I said, we have a capital improvement program where we're working to plan out and project the next 10 years. Council approves it every fiscal year, but Finance Department works with us to project for future bond issuances and things like that where we might be able to find the funding. So I don't have a straight answer yet. It could come from multiple sources.
Yeah, too. But this Parkland Dedication Fund, that's one of the options, correct?
Correct.
No further questions.
Mayor Pro Tem Hayward.
Have you considered reaching out to our congressman for a project, community project funding, application to possibly see it, being that it's almost kind of a regional project because we're connecting with other communities?
I have not looked at that yet. Some of these federal-funded programs, though, you can't match federal funds together. I'd have to look into it, but that's a good tip. Thank you. I'll take a look at it.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, I just want to confirm. All we're doing here tonight is authorizing you to go in and request
An application.
An application for a grant.
Correct.
Okay, we're not asking for funding, but we know that if we are selected, then a certain amount of money will be provided by the state, and we'll have to come up with the rest of it.
Correct, and we'll have to come back and let you know.
And we won't know that until you set a vow in October?
Yes.
About October. Okay. Having said that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 25R079.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Brown, second by Mayor Pro Tem Hayward. Council, any other comments? Please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please? We have seven ayes, no objections. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to a public hearing. Item number 13, ordinance number 25S024, conducting public hearing and consider amendments to Part III of the Shirts Code of Ordinance Unified Development Code, UDC, to Article 11, sign and advertising devices, Article III, boards, commissions, and committees, Section 21.3.3, planning and zoning commission, Article VII, nonconforming uses, lots, and structures, and Article number 16, definitions. Mr. Haas, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Williams. This is ordinance 25S024, UDC amendments related to sign codes. Samuel Haas, Senior Planner. So a little background on this, staffs are bringing these amendments forward in conjunction with all the workshops that were recently done on temporary signs. We looked at, the last time this article was updated was 2017, and thought that it was time to kind of do some updating. So our general approach was in kind of three phases. We looked at editorial changes, how do we convey information a little bit better? How do we reorganize sections that make sense and flow a little bit better as an article? And then, you know, removing any redundant or unnecessary language if it's covered in other sections of the UDC or other ordinances. Number two, making it consistent with other UDC sections and also with other city policies. And then, number three, which is the meat and potatoes of this presentation, the actual adjustments that we're proposing with the code. So just kind of an example of approach number one, you'll see on the left is our current code, and on the right is our proposed code. These are the same sections where we were able to take really wordy paragraphs and make nice punchy bullet points. We did it. Kind of a theme we've been doing with our UDC amendments lately, so we stuck with that. Reorganizing some sections, too, we were able to, we're proposing to combine some sections and sort of move, for instance, nonconforming signs into our nonconforming section in the UDC, so free up some space in the sign code and put that over in the nonconforming section. So in terms of redundancies, this is an example here. So you see on the left is our current UDC, and on the right is our code of ordinances. There's information in our code of ordinances that requires insurance, that requires electrical license, so we didn't feel like it was needed in the UDC if it's already covered in the code of ordinances. That's just an example of one of the redundancies that we helped eliminate. Approach number two, keeping things consistent with the UDC and other city documents and policies. So for example of this, is we, you know, the city manager or his or her designee was added where we could. We matched language with other portions of the UDC. For example, in Article 16, we made sure definitions matched, and we edited definitions as we needed to. And then, another example is there was a section in the existing sign code that said, you know, work without a permit is doubled the fee. We're not really sure where that came from, so we just said we're matching the fee schedule and what that says. And so, that's just another example of trying to be consistent across, you know, multiple city policies. And then, number three, our actual code adjustments. So these were made in three different sections, wall signs, what we're calling freestanding signs, and then also temporary signs. And I'll just walk through that. So for wall signs, right now, the current code, we have area requirements pertaining to each sign. What staff is proposing is that we take the entire wall of a building and we give them an allotment of square footage. So I'll show you here on the next slide. This is Walmart here on 3009. The three arrows, under our current code, we would permit that as three separate signs. What we're proposing now is that you look at the entire wall face, you say you get X amount of square footage, and you can put your signage how you want to, whether you make it one giant Walmart, one Little Vision, one Home &amp; Pharmacy. That's all, you know, you can do that so long as you're staying under the allotted square footage. And so, here's an example of that. You'll see, under the current code, we have these areas with limited access, areas with unlimited access in all of the streets. We, what that means is just really the road classification that you're abutting. So rather than making people call us and ask us what that means, we just decided to put interstates and farm-to-market roads in all of the roads. And you'll see here, it says maximum sign area per facade. So for interstates and farm-to-market roads, you get 250 square feet. That's not per sign, that's per facade, right? So you can put some letters, or an image, or an icon, or something, as long as that added up, square footage doesn't exceed what you're allotted per facade, then that is okay. And then, we're doing, for maximum number of facades with signage allowed, three per building, that is essentially what's in the current code right now. Some additional items in the wall signs, so in the current code, we have this provision that if you're in an industrial district and you have a large building that is greater than 300 feet in linear feet on one side, then you get more square footage. We made that a little more simple and basically just said for all buildings over 100,000 square feet, you get a little bit more square footage for your signage area on wall signs. So that doesn't have to just be in our industrial districts, it can be in our commercial districts as well. We did this with the big-box stores in mind, like HEB, Target, Home Depot, things like that. Typically, those are very large buildings, they need a little more signage to put, you know, Lumber Yard, Home Depot, things like that on there. So that's what that is for. The roofline projection, right now, it is in our code that you cannot have a wall sign that goes up above the roofline. We left that in there. Also, the wall sign projection, we also just left that in there, but we reworded it to say that your wall sign can extend into the building setback. Also, the provision that is in our current code that says if you have a wall that is within 150 feet of a residential use, you cannot put a wall sign on that. We left that in there, we thought that was a good idea, so that remains the same as well. And then, we have a new provision. It's basically saying on Main Street, if you, if the rear of your building is facing FM 78, you're allowed to have a greater wall sign. We did that, knowing that advertising and making Main Street a little more visible for people driving on 78 would be beneficial. So we just included that provision in there just to make sure there was no confusion on that. So the other thing is, is in the existing code, you're allowed a, what they call a primary sign. So you get one sign for 100% of the square footage, and then, all your other signs, you have to reduce the size of it by 25%. For the sake of simplicity, staff is proposing to remove that and just say you can do the same-size sign on all your facades allowable. So for freestanding signs, right now, in our current code, we have freestanding ground sign, monument sign, multi-tenant sign, and electronic sign. Those are all three separate sections. Right here, this SAS shoes, that is an example of a freestanding ground sign. This Children's Lighthouse is a monument sign. This Walmart is a multi-tenant sign, and this electronic sign over here off to the right, that is an example of an electronic sign, sorry. So staff kind of looked at this and said, these are all essentially just freestanding signs, signs that are on their own without support of, you know, on a building or something. So we combined all those sections. And kind of, so in our existing code, if you have a freestanding ground sign, you're allowed a height of between 20 and 50 feet. You're allowed an area of between 32 and 250 square feet, and you get one per lot frontage. Monument signs, they're shorter, you only, you, max height, 5'6", 50 square feet in area, one per lot frontage. There's some material requirements as well. Multi-tenant signs, you're only allowed up to 15 to 20 feet on your multi-tenant sign, and you're only allowed up to 150 square feet, one per lot frontage. And for the electronic signs, maximum height 18, maximum area 50, one per lot frontage as well. So we took all those and we kind of distilled it down into one table for freestanding signs. So you'll see that for your max height, we're not going above 50, so similar to a regular freestanding ground sign in our existing code. If you're still allowed to do a monument sign, there's nothing stopping you from doing a monument sign in the proposed amendments. The multi-tenant sign is actually going a little bit bigger. So if you have more tenants, under the existing code, you're capped at 20 feet, we're saying that you can bump it up to 50 for interstates, 35 for farm-to-market roads, and you get a little bit bigger sign with those multi-tenant signs. That made sense to staff because you have more businesses trying to advertise on that. Planning and zoning commission did propose a modification. Under the existing code, farm-to-market roads and Shirts Parkway, you're allowed a 40-foot tall sign, and so, we proposed to just reduce that to 35, and that was P&amp;Z's suggestion, so staff made that change as well. Under electronic signs, a lot of the same requirements are still there. So our existing code says it has to be 50 square feet per face. We left that in there. Limited to two faces per sign, that's the same as the existing code. And then, some of the other requirements such as, you know, rapidly moving objects, you know, having, changing your copy every four seconds, things that would be distracting the drivers, we left those restrictions in there. Same thing with the white background between 30 minutes before sunset and sunrise. So those are all remaining. And in our multi-tenant signs, we basically left a provision in there that said no single tenant could have more than 50% of the allowable square footage. That is to ensure that, you know, somebody doesn't come in with a, as a multi-tenant sign and take up most of it and leave hardly anything for the other businesses. Temporary signs, I'm not going to go too much into this because this has been pretty hashed out for city council. Basically, all the changes that were proposed at the last workshop, we have included here. I can answer any questions for that later. And then, finally, the last section that we added in here was a waiver process. So staff felt that for, if there were some extenuating circumstances for property owners and business owners that, you know, they couldn't, if there was a really tall oak tree that made them, that blotted out their only feasible sign place or something, we thought we wanted to have some sort of process in here, so there could be a waiver in those circumstances. That is proposed to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If they vote no on that and applicant appeals, that'll go before city council to hear that appeal. So when staff is looking at UDC amendments, we look at Section 2147D, criteria for approval. Number one, the proposed amendment promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city. So staff is trying to make this development code a little more logical, easier to understand, a little simpler to both enforce and administer. And staff feels that we are promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the city by making this a little more user-friendly for residents, applicant, and staff as well. Number two, the proposed amendments is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policy of the UDC and the city. So a lot of these amendments are consistent with the goals and desires of the city council through the sign code workshop that we've recently had. Also, I like to pull in the Shirts Strategic Plan. In the goals and objectives, they have a section there that claims that for a thriving economy, we think that these proposed amendments do support our business retention and recruitment, helps out our business community here. Number three, the proposed amendments correction error meets the challenge of changing condition or is in response to changes in state law. So the amendments are in response to issues that residents and applicants have had historically with Article 11, and this is staff's efforts to make it a little simpler and easier to address those concerns. And certain sections do reflect changing conditions, such as allowing murals, and then also, staff did make a change in classification of Shirts Parkway. In the existing code, Shirts Parkway is lumped in with farm-to-market roads. Staff feels that what is developing on Shirts Parkway is not the same as 1103 or 3009, so we've actually reduced some of the, or we've increased some of the restrictions, I should say, on Shirts Parkway. And then, number four, other factors which are deemed relevant and important in the consideration of the amendment. So staff has ensured all UDC requirements have been met, the city attorney's office has assisted with ensuring that we're complying with state law, and this public hearing provides an opportunity to introduce additional considerations. So these proposed amendments promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the Shirts, align with city policies, and help meet the challenge of changing conditions. Staff is recommending approval of 25S024, and the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on May 7, 2025, and recommended an approval with that one modification with a 7 to 0 vote. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. All right, this item is on the agenda as an open public hearing, and the time is 7:42. Is there anyone in attendance who'd like to address the city council in reference to this subject? Before addressing the council for the record, please state your name and address.
Maggie Titterington, 1730 Shirts Parkway. Mayor, city manager, council again. I sent you a letter, and I think most of you all received it, so I'm not going to read the entire thing, but just so that it's on public record, I'm speaking on behalf of several businesses that, with the temporary signs in particular. First and foremost, those are some great updates that Mr. Haas, Mr. James, Ms. Wood did. A lot of them are so much more flexible and business-friendly. The thing that I'm going to specifically comment on is the regulation to the feather flag signs. So going to the temporary signs right now, it states in there that they'll be permitted for a maximum of 120 calendar days. This is for temporary signs, not the feather flags, with the temporary sign permits issued in 30-day increments. So based on this, 120 days in 30-day increments, that's four signs a year, temporary signs that a business can have promoting whatever they may have going on. So, you know, each individual sign, though, counts towards that 120. So instead of saying they want to have one every quarter or four a year, if they use two temporary signs, say, one going in this direction, one going in this, that is going to be a cumulative of 60 days. That just leaves two signs to be used for the end of the year. We don't have any problem with that, and I think that's very fair, that's very flexible and understandable. So what I am concerned about is the feather flags have not been afforded the same flexibility. So based on the clarification I received, and you saw it on the breakdown, it's 14 days, 14 calendar days. So that usage is restricted to seven-day increments. So that is two feather flags in one week's time, and that is it, and they're done. So if we're having a grand opening, like I will use Blue Wave for an example, I believe they had two or three feather flags up at that time just to advertise, and then they were taken down. I don't even think it was a week. But according to the way the policy is being proposed right now, they're done. So if they have anything else going on, they're done. They can't do it. They can't do a feather flag. And so, all I'm respectfully asking the council is just consider increasing the duration for those feather flags to 28 days. So from 14 to 28, that allows the four signs, just like you're doing for the temporary signs. So that would be the seven-day increments, and this adjustment would allow businesses to display their feather flags up to four times per year, being consistent with the rest of the proposed UDC code for temporary signs. So this approach, it supports local business visibility, it remains mindful of the aesthetics because we want our city to look good, but it just makes it more fair and equitable, and it gives them just a little bit more flexibility. Other than that, Mayor, council, city manager, Williams, I mean, I just think they did an outstanding job, and there's so much good edits that have been done on this that I think a lot of the businesses are really going to be pleased with the signs going by the square footage and everything. It's just this one little thing. If council, I respectfully ask if you would just consider extending it to 28 days instead of 14. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else? Anyone else like to address the council? Going once, going twice. All right, the time is now 6:46. Public hearing is closed. All right, council, floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, can I get a clarification on the feather flags? I know what we're, I like all the changes, but I know we're saying the inflatable signs are done, they're absolutely prohibited, and I can understand that to a point. I'm not quite sure I understand the feather flag portion with the 14 days. So if I have one feather flag, I can get a permit to put it up for 14 days in the calendar year, right? in the calendar year, right?
So you get three per business?
Three flags?
Three flags per business or tenant. So those three flags can stay up for fourteen days?
Max, all total.
Per calendar year.
Per calendar year. Um, you know, I, at, at the end of the day, my, my concern on, on flags are, number one, are they not, making sure they're not putting them in a place where they're obstructing traffic or pedestrians or stuff like that. That's number one. Number two, the number of signs. I'm happy it's capped at three. You know, I, I've seen places out there where they put out twenty signs, twenty flag signs, and it's a bit overkill. So I'm happy with the three. But my other big concern is, is whether or not they're serviceable or not. And I don't see any, any comment in there about whether or not they are frayed, faded, unserviceable, ripped, or torn. And when I see flags out there, feather flags out there, I think that's the biggest thing that draws ire for me is when they're not being maintained and they're putting them up there. I, I myself don't have a problem with bumping it up to twenty-eight days or thirty days. You've got businesses out there, they've, they've got different events and stuff like that. We, we put on different events. You've got the Fourth of July Jubilee, you've got the, the, the holodazzle events, and then you've got the businesses having their own events and stuff like that. I think fourteen days is kind of on the lean side. I'm happy if we're going to cap it at three, and as long as we're enforcing the maintenance of those signs.
But we are, we are not going to enforce the maintenance of feather flags. To be blunt, the problem we have is, I mean, you all can imagine, staff goes out, we look at a flag and say, hey, that's, that's kind of ratty looking, it's kind of, kind of fraying at the end. What is the likelihood that they're going to say, oh my gosh, staff, you are so right, apologize for that, that's, that's not a good look we want to have, and they're going to pull that down? As opposed to, how likely is it that before the staff person even gets back to the office, the city manager's got a call from one of you, who's got a call from one of the residents going, what is staff doing? And, and, and I don't mean this insincerely, and I, I appreciate it, but it, it becomes really problematic if I'm having a ten-minute conversation with the councilperson, going over photos, trying to justify that staff felt this was too, too worn out. And, and so what I would say is, part of the thing, whether we do fifteen days or thirty days, it's six and one-half, does the other fourteen or thirty? Part of the reason for a short length of time is they're not up so long that they're going to get so ratty and torn and then be up for so long after that. Yeah, we'll probably have a business owner who, who sticks it up, and we're five years in using the same flags for his thirty days, and they're looking kind of worn out. I just don't think it's practical that staff can really enforce that. I think we're going to get into a lot of debates standing out there with the property owner of, I think it's fine, you think it's not. So, so I think that's part of why we went the way we did, is to say we really, that's not one we can practically enforce, to be honest.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Again, great job putting it all together, a lot clearer, a lot easier to read. The only thing I'm going to say is, I, I'm going to agree with Maggie in the chamber that on the, on the feather flags, four, seven-day periods a year, I think is reasonable. I think anything, you know, that, that puts it in, in the same category as all the other temporary signs, but. And capping at three, absolutely reasonable.
So I think, you know, at this point, we've had so many conversations, I think staff is fine either way. Just a reminder, though, they have to come in and pull a temp permit to put that feather flag up for that week period. And again, I think, I'm going to say this the same way, if the expectation is we enforce the code, we're going to enforce the code. And, and so the problem is, we're going to tell them, get it down. You know, I mean, it becomes, it becomes a real issue of coming to get a permit, how long they leave it up, how we deal with it, right? I mean, because at some point, this stuff takes a while, and at some point, before they even bother to get in the permit, they've left it up a week. And at that point, are we saying, well, you've had it up a week already, I'm not issuing the permit, or I'm going to issue the permit? So we can do it, the more often we go, the more times, it just complicates it a bit. So just because we have folks on both sides of it, this one is just going to be a challenge. And, and I, I need there to be an understanding that it's, it's not always going to be handled in a way that every individual in the community feels it should be handled, just as a caveat.
We know there's always that, that person, company, business that's special. But I also trust the city to be, to be able to manage it, just like all the other signs that we have.
I, I just want to go ahead and echo on, you know, the chamber does represent the businesses, and getting input from the businesses is, is very... I mean, the information that she is providing has been, has been relayed from the businesses to us, and I think we should give it strong consideration to, to allow the twenty-eight days instead of the fourteen, based on the input that we got from the chamber. Counsel, any other comments? Well, I'd like to make a motion then to approve ordinance number twenty-five S twenty-four with the change of the feather flags reading twenty-eight days instead of fourteen days. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion made by the chair and second by councilmember Davis. Counsel, any other comments? Please cast your vote. We could publish the vote, please. We have five yeas, two objections, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to, we have a workshop today. Workshop discussion regarding the review of ordinance twenty-three M twenty-eight. On that, regarding that, that ordinance, if council, would council like for us to go over some of the changes that were made as far as the, the edits of misspelling or grammar? There's only four items that I'd like to address for separate discussion, and we can move on to those and not worry about the grammar? Okay? All right. So the first item I'd like to discuss is under Article Two. It is regarding absences, and this is something that the council is not doing at this time. It is, according to our rules and procedures, this, the city secretary is supposed to annotate the, the absences and the reasons therefore in the minutes, and we're not annotating that. So the question here is, do we enforce it, or do we change the policy? So that's the first item I'd like to discuss. So floor is open for discussion on this one. Mayor Proton Hayward?
I, I guess my question would be, if we haven't enforced it, and we haven't had an issue with it, or is it more of letting the residents know why a particular council member is absent from the dais, so it's more transparent?
I believe that was the reason why it was added in there. We don't, I don't think we need to be specific as to why a council's not absent, is not here. We can make it very general, where we can put medical, training, personal, work-related. We can make it so general so that we can know exactly what the issue was, but not specifics. Or we can just remove it from the article. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I, I mean, if we're not doing anything about it, if it hasn't been an issue, you know, even, even changing it really doesn't matter. Yeah. But I don't know if we, if we want to get rid of it. But at the same time, again, you know, it's, it's wasted words if we're not doing anything about it. Have we had any known issues, whether on this council or previous councils, or people, you know, just boycott coming to their elected position?
Okay. All right. I think, any other comments? I think we have direction on this one. Councilmember Guedelo?
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree. If there's no, if there hasn't been any issues, yeah, then we really don't need it, in my opinion. I agree with councilmember Tim Brown.
Okay.
Mayor, I would remind you that there, there is a charter provision that says that you have to have your absences excused.
Okay, there is, okay. So it needs to be enforced, then?
Yeah, so, so what the charter says is that failure to regularly attend city council meetings without an approved absence obtained by a majority vote by city council either before or after the absence, there's a presumption of failure to, failure to regularly attend when three regular meetings are missed during a term year without obtaining approval.
Okay. And the charter overrides, supersedes our rules and procedures. So what we'll do then is, we'll, we'll enforce it, we'll make general comments as far as whether it's work-related, personal, or medical. I think those are the three fields that we could use that will accommodate all of them, and they'll be added to the minutes. With that, with that change, then, what I think I would do then, as the presiding chair is, when it's, when we have announcements or recognitions by the mayor, I will probably annotate it at that point, any absences, so that we can go ahead and put it on the record. All right. So that settles that one there. The next one is easy. It's regarding, where is it? Article seven, ordinances. There's a conflict between ordinances on our rules and procedures and the charter, and I just want to bring that to the attention of the council, that we are removing two readings to read one reading. Any questions on that? No questions. Yes, councilmember Westbrook?
So later, later, so it says, if not unanimously approved, the ordinance must appear on the next agenda, consent or discussion. How will it be determined whether it is consent or agenda?
Well, in that situation, we had that instances, when the ordinance had two readings, it came back, and if it wasn't unanimous, it would be, it would be as a discussion item.
Discussion?
Yeah, but in this situation, we won't have a second reading.
All right.
So that the entire paragraph will have to be rewritten to, to remove that type of language. It will pass on the first reading or fail. Hmm? Any other comments on that, Article seven? All right. We'll move on to the next one, Article eleven. Article eleven, no person, no person may concurrently serve on more than one board unless by virtue of his or her position on council. On this one, again, we have, we have a conflict. We do have members that are in more than one board, and the question is, do we enforce it, or do we make adjustments to this policy? So with that, council needs some input on this one.
What do we, are we talking about council members?
And we're looking at Article eleven, eleven dot one, on page fourteen. Mayor Proton Hayward?
Um, we're not currently enforcing it. I, I don't see the need to change whether they're on more than one board, if they're on two. And then when we have our, I think the capital improvements, those, some of those, I think it's going to change with the legis, the new law, but some of those that are on the capital improvement are planners, commissioners, so that kind of technically puts them on two boards. And then if we decide to do something with the building and standards, because there are certain requirements for that board, the suggestion has been to take board members on other boards that have the designation that's needed for building and standards to be on the building and standards because they don't meet as often. So then that could potentially put someone on a second board. And I think as time has come, a lot of the people are kind of moving away from the boards, where we're not having some of them on two or more boards because they've either ran out of time on serving on a board, or they've just throttled back.
Now, I understand why this was added into the rules and procedures. Again, most of these rules and procedures before any of us were on council, and I think part of it is to extend the opportunities for more participation. But if we don't limit, I mean, because I, we might have one or two persons that are on three boards. No, change, if, if there's a change requirement from one to two or unlimited, that's, that's the input I need so that we can go in that direction. Councilmember Davis?
I'm confused here. Are we talking about members of the council being on boards?
No, no.
Or just our board members?
Yes.
And, and the reason why I say that, I mean, historically, it has not been a problem lately, but I can guarantee you that back in the day, with, with all the boards that we have, and the potential to have more boards coming up in the future, there have been times where we haven't had any volunteers. We've done calls for volunteers, and we've got five or six opening on boards and commissions, and two people apply. That's how I started out. I applied to be on a board in the commission. I got placed on TSAC. I, I wanted to be on parks, they put me on parks, and then they called me back a month later and they said, hey, would you like to be on TSAC as well? Because they couldn't get people. And, and we do have that case going on here now. I think there are some people that if we had sufficient volunteers, and we had someone that was on two or three boards, I'm sure if we approached them, they would say, yeah, I wouldn't mind giving up a seat on a board on one of the, one or two of them. But I think you need that flexibility, because there, there are going to be times where, where you've got a board that's got multiple openings, and it's generally, it's generally certain ones. You know, whenever we do a call for volunteers, we get a lot of volunteers for EDC, planning and zoning, maybe parks, not a lot for like the library, not a lot for TSAC. You know, I, I myself, if, if somebody wants to serve their community and serve on more than one board, I, I don't think that's a problem. I think we have to look at certain cases. It may be problematic if you've got somebody that is on, let's say, EDC and planning and zoning at the same time. But, you know, if somebody's on parks and TSAC, I, I don't think that's the, the end of the world, that, that's a problem for the city.
No, I, I agree with you. There's three, three main boards that we have that, that meet on a regular basis, Parks and Rec, EDC, and Planning and Zoning. And I think those three are the main ones. But I still need direction here. Should we put two and possible three with, with council's consent?
Well, we also, we also have somewhere there are members of certain committees that are required to be on other committees, correct? Capital improvements, doesn't that require people from P and Z?
Allows us to appoint P and Z, plus because we apply them to ETJ, two other members. We don't have to. As Councilwoman Hayward said, there was a bill passed that would change that, so it may be a moot point.
What about?
Building and standards has certain requirements.
Building and standards, that requires?
So it requires you to have certain skill sets to be on the Building and Standards Commission, you have to have certain experience. And, and so what we tend to find, like for an example, is Glenn Outlaw, who serves as Chair of P and Z, has that fire background from having been the fire marshal, so he's a good fit for building and standards. But building and standards doesn't meet very often. I don't know that they met at all last year, so it's not as though he's overwhelmed by both.
Right. I mean, but that's, that's another example of where, I mean, and I remember when we've been talking about building standards, we advertised that ad nauseam, and, and because of the requirements on it, you need... ad nauseam, and, and because of the requirements on it, you need a construction person, you need someone with a fire background, you need someone with electrical background, I believe.
Right.
You know, it's finding a qualified person is challenging by itself. And now if you, if you do have somebody that is retired and is want to serve their community, you know, to sit there and say, "Well, you can't do this one now."
Yeah, and, and the other question I had, and I don't know if Shaila and Sharina know, but how many people do we have that sit on more than one board, commission, or committee, if that's how we're defining a board? It, it's, I mean, I can count two or three, right? It's not very many these days. And again, these are folks fairly engaged in the community, who've kind of done it for a while and have a lot of experience, right? And so, again, if the concept is, let me offer this, that you don't want somebody sitting on a whole lot of boards or commissions, and you don't want somebody sitting on a different boards or commissions that the review or responsibility kind of overlaps, that makes perfect sense. You know, but to me, I, I don't know that you need a policy on it. You can just decide not to appoint them and say, "Hey, these days we have a whole bunch of qualified applicants. Let's not have people sit on more than one, and let's choose not to appoint them that way." And you can make that clear why. I don't know that you have to constrain yourself through having that prohibition in. And then again, the question, I guess, for clarity is, again, it doesn't seem as though this is specific to just non-council members. And so again, if you're reading board to mean board, commission, committee very broadly, we've got the Main Street Committee, we've got TERS Board. So just for clarification, I think would help staff as well.
Right, Mayor Proton Hayward. Well, Steve, you had something.
Yeah, just to expound on what Brian was saying, if you read this section, it, it reads, "The council may create committees, boards, and commissions." And then under the prohibition, it says, "No person shall concurrently serve on more than one board." So is, is that a broad definition? Because we have named boards, commissions, and committees. But if it only pertains to boards, I mean, maybe Dan, maybe you could clarify. If it's, I would say if, if the intent is to apply broadly, we should clarify the language.
Yeah, yeah, it's understanding committees, so I, I think it applies to committees, yeah.
Yeah.
So council, we need direction. Do we remove it? Do we change one to two?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor? I'm thinking because we have the interview committee, the interview committee can be the, kind of the gatekeeper on that, on when people are on boards and how many people we get for a position as we're advertising. Because even with, like, Councilmember Davis said, with Building and Standards, you put it out, you're asking for people, asking for people, then we get some people that doesn't meet, they go away. Then we have to do it again. And so I think it's more of using, because you've got three council members on the interview board, plus each chair of a particular board making those decisions. So if someone comes in and we see that they're on a board already, we can say, "Well, we have these other people to interview," because sometimes we have openings and we don't get anybody. Or we have openings and we get a ton of people. So I think it's, it should just be a case by case, and we don't necessarily need to put a, a policy in place. Because we're not having those issues at the moment.
Councilmember Macaluso.
Yeah, I think that, I kind of see both sides on it. I, I think we do have a shortage of volunteers, especially for certain committees. But I do see how there should be a restriction to allow someone on the parks to serve on the EDC, or the EDC to serve on the planning. So I think, can we not maybe specify certain boards that somebody could not sit on both of? And then on the others, it can be more flexibility?
Council? I mean, it's entirely, yeah, we can do that. We can make sure that they're, they don't serve on two of those boards. They're restricted to only serving on one. We can make that, that change. Right. They cannot serve on two of those boards. Yeah, we can make that change. Okay, any questions on making that change? All right, let's move, Councilmember Westbrook.
Yes, Mayor. So to Councilmember Hayward's point, when, if they are the gatekeeper, when should the city council be notified that, hey, they've, we've got somebody serving on three or more boards? Like, when should the city council be?
Well, without it being on the policy, we won't, we won't be notified.
The way it can happen is if some, let's say someone's on planning and zoning, and then they do try to do parks. If we already know that they're on planning and zoning, as the board, as the interview board, we can say, "Well, we see that you're on planning and zoning. You're not allowed to be on parks," because we've heard that. They're going, they're on planning and zoning, and then they're on TSAC, two separate things. Because if we see someone on three boards, the interview committee is the ones that bring up the recommendations for council to vote on. So if we don't bring that recommendation up, you won't have to vote on someone to be on three boards. Because if we don't vote on it, we just get, bring the recommendation to council like we did, and then council has to decide yes or no on those that are on those committees.
So unless it's written here that you can be on two boards unless the third one is with the approval of council, there wouldn't be unless?
Well, those of us that are in council, we would, that are on the interview board, we would know what council's, I mean, you could put it in there, but we would know what council's thought process is, because we're sitting on council. And we can let that know, and that can be part of a interview board policy.
So would you like that on policy? I'm just, again, we need.
This says right here, "Membership and selection of members shall be determined, or shall be as determined by the council, if not specified by the charter, the code of ordinances, or state law." So, you know, it, it's up to the council.
Right.
Okay, except in those three cases. And, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna try to make, you, you can't say, "Okay, interview committee, you're in charge of policy unless we have the policy." Okay, we, we have to set the policy.
You have to set the policy.
Okay. And as long as it's, as long as it's not in conflict with charter, code of ordinances, or state law.
We can put two and, and with the third one, have council's approval. Go ahead, Councilmember Davis.
But even at two, they're coming to council for approval. So I mean, to me, to me, the issue is, is the only policy I think we need, if we're going to have a policy, because as, as Councilman Brown said, it's determined by council unless there's a specific provision in charter, code of orders, or state law. I think the only concern that, it sounds like I'm hearing from council is there are certain combinations that we probably want to stay away from. And instead of saying you can't be on more than two, or you can't be on more than three, I think it would be, it would be better for us to specify appointed board members cannot serve concurrently on Board A and Board B, Board B and Board C. So I mean, if there's, I mean, I, I right now, I guess my only concern is, I would have bad feelings about someone being on EDC and planning and zoning at the same time. I can't think of too many other concerns that I would have. I don't think I'm overly concerned if somebody were on the Parks Board and planning and zoning. And I spent a lot of time on the Parks Board, and the stuff that comes there, generally, it's, it's well past the time that anything has gone through planning and zoning. We used to beg to say, "Hey, if something is going through planning and zoning, why don't you run it through the Parks Board at the same time?" So that they could look at a HOA park versus the proposal. I mean, back in the day, we had HOA parks or City Park, or we had parkland fees in lieu of. And a lot of times, it was planning and zoning, and the staff that through that process would come up with something like parkland fees in lieu of, where the contractor, the developer would be developing a, a residential area with no HOA park and no City Park. And then by the time it gets to, a, a comment gets to the Parks Board, it's, "Yeah, we have a gap in our recreation system now because there's no recreational activity anywhere near this development." The closest one is Ashley Park, three miles away or four miles away. So, I mean, I don't think there's a big conflict. I mean, but I'm okay with it. If, if, if we decide we want to look at this, then I think we should look at the boards and say, "Where is there a potential conflict between Board One and Board Two?" To me, the only one that I, that I really have, I would weigh in on is, is EDC and P&amp;Z.
Right, Councilmember Guerrero.
I, I agree with Councilman Macaluso. If we're going to have one or two or three restricted ones, then yeah, they can serve on one of those, and then they can serve on any of the other ones. I would, if you, but if we're talking about a number, I would go with two, with two boards apiece. Because it was stated that there's not very many people that are on two boards. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any on three. Yeah. I don't think any, anyone's on three. I don't think that's.
Gotcha. So I mean, if we're looking for a number, I'm going to propose two. One of the restricted ones, and then one of the other ones.
Councilmember Macaluso.
Yeah, just, you know, going off of what Councilman Davis said. I, I do see an issue with parks and EDC, just because we've been using EDC funds to fund some of the park projects. However, I, I, I don't think we need a limit at two, because I think, you know, you're, we might have a really great volunteer that has good ideas in a lot of different areas, and if they're not conflicting with each other, why restrict them from being able to serve if we don't have others that are available? So I, I have confidence in the interview board. I think that it's something that we discuss. We look at the rosters, we know who's all on there. I think that we would all be cognizant of that. But I do think we should have it stated, you know, certain combinations just, you know, prevent, present a conflict that we really don't want.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I think we can easily find the right wording for that, that everybody would be happy with. Something along the line of, and don't quote me, but, you know, something along the line of, you know, they can serve on boards, except you can't concurrently serve on Parks, EDC, and Planning and Zoning with that restriction.
All right. All right, we'll, we'll make those changes and we'll bring it up to council. We got direction on this one. Okay. The last item is also on Article 11, 11 dot 1. Persons related within the second degree of affinity and cons, consanguinity. That's a hard word for me. "To the mayor or any council member should not be eligible to serve on a standing committee." So again, this item is brought up for discussion. And we do have an issue with one of the members serving on two committee boards, and I'd like to know exactly what direction the council wants to go on this one. Councilmember Davis.
Jumping into the fire all the time. Yeah, this, this came up before. We had an applicant that applied to be on a border commission who was related to a council member. And our discussion, because I was on the interview committee at the time, and our discussion was more of, is it a public appearance? The individual wanted to get on Planning and Zoning, and they had a family member that was on city council. And our concern was, there are few boards that, that have specific responsibilities that weigh heavy coming into city council. Particularly Planning and Zoning and EDC. Beyond that, all the other rest of the committees are like advisory positions. Parks and Rec comes in, they come in with a budget recommendation, they come in with a recommendation for a trail, stuff like that. But, but they really have no obligation authority or anything else other than with the recommendations that they come to council, and the council has to make, make a thing, make a, a decision on. Planning and zoning is kind of different, and EDC is definitely kind of different. And, and I remember at one point, someone said, "Well, you know, we don't see eye to eye on everything." And don't get me wrong, I think that would be funny if the family, one family member voted one way, and the other family member voted another way. However, it's the perception that the public gets where if that border commission recommends something, and then the family member recommends it or concurs with it on here, either way, positive or negative, it's the perception out there that the, the cards are stacked. Again, I don't think that's a big problem with the library board, or the Parks Board, or TSAC. TSAC looks at safety issues in here, and then they make recommendations back to the city staff on adding stop signs or doing traffic studies. That recommendation gets vetted by the staff, and the staff comes in and brings it to the council. The only ones that are, that are kind of sort of autonomous and have a lot more authority would be Planning and Zoning and EDC. So I think if there's going to be a limitation on, on family members serving on any board or commissions, it should probably be limited. And I would, I would recommend limited to those two.
The Board of Adjustments also has a stronger input, am I not mistaken? Because that overrides the council also, Board of Adjustments.
Yeah, you've got some issues with Board of Adjustment and Building and Standards Commission. We haven't had anything that's become an issue in forever. Again, it's, it's typical of, those be the potential.
So we're looking at four boards, then, that we could actually specify here?
I mean, there's, you could argue TERS Board as well, in theory, with approving payments, but, yeah.
We can add TERS.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're looking at adding those five boards. Board of Adjustments. And TERS. Okay. Council, any other comments? Nope. I think we have the direction we need to go in, so that we can go ahead and modify this, and bring it up for council's approval on the ordinance. Any other items you'd like to discuss in reference to this rules and procedures that we did not address? Be any, all right, so we'll go down to the next one. All right, council. Item number 15 basically is a petition for removal of prop, removal of property from the City of Shirts ETJ, approximately 6.46 acres of ETJ release in Northern Shirts near FM 2252 within Coop Mall County. This is information packet that was provided to council and available for public viewing at our website, shirts.com. So we'll move on. Council, any possible information requested from staff? Council, any possible items you'd like to place on the future agenda? Right, announcements by council. Mayor Proton Hayward.
Yes, I did the GFOAT Budget Academy. It was a 16-hour training for the Bu, a Budget Academy. That was a lot of information that I actually attended. Then I did the TML Financial Boot Camp, and that was Finance Fundamental Boot Camp Workshop. And Deputy City Secretary Sharie Corney attended with me. It was a lot of information. So Finance Department, call her if you need help. She got a lot of information out of that. I'm pleased. And then I have now received my Certified Municipal Officer Legacy Designation, so I will only need 15 hours per, going forward to continue to keep my certification, and that's all.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, it's been busy since my back has been recovering. Had the opportunity to do the interview board recently, attended the TSAC meeting, the Parks and Rec meeting last night, and the Housing Authority meeting on last Monday.
Councilmember Watson.
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Macaluso.
Yeah, just, we had an interview committee meeting last week.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Yes, I attended the, the Youth Firefighters graduation. That went well. I also attended the VFW meeting. That went well.
Councilmember Westbrook.
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Brown.
Nothing tonight, sir.
All right, the time is 7:26. We stand adjourned.